Let's call this committee the whole meeting to order for January 21st, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Donnell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bate.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Ervin is present.
Is there a motion approved the minutes of the January 7th, 2025 meeting? There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Mohammed, present.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Going to be briefed tonight of the mayor's report. Just to recap, we had a wonderful MLK weekend here in Aurora kicking off Friday at Fox Valley Mall, where we celebrated its 50 minority women-owned businesses, including six brand-new businesses, and concluding last night with over 1,000 people at East Aurora High School, where we celebrated youth and adults, just had a great time. So, thank everybody for coming and enjoying yourselves. Today kicks off the inaugural Aurora Restaurant Week. So, we're so excited. Over 50 restaurants around the city of Aurora having specials and deals. Log on to the website and safe tune to social media. We're all over traditional media in Chicago as well. Concurring with Chicago Restaurant Week, and as I was just sharing with John in the back there, we're getting more publicity on Chicago television than Chicago Restaurant Week. So, Aurora's doing some great things in that space as well. We have two upcoming events that we invite you to. This Friday, here in this room, we have the announcement on the Bilter Road Project. We'll announce the development team that will build out that space over there, that 50-acre space. And next Thursday, on January 30th, we will have the community-wide census kickoff at North Island Center as we prepare for the census kickoff, which is on February 3rd. You get all this in your email. Just wanted to update you, and thank you for your participation. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. That concludes the mayor's report. Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Will you please read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the Committee of the Whole for up to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the Committee of the Whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you call the first person wishing to offer public comment?
Nina R. May.
Madam, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Good evening, council members and Aurora residents. I stand before you to expose Alderman-at-Large John Lash as a clear present and danger to our city. His actions are not just unethical, they are the direct threat to the very fabric of our community. John Lash has built his platform on a relentless campaign of targeting, discrediting, and humiliating others, not only residents and business owners, but also women in leadership. This behavior reflects a complete disregard for courage, independence, and progress, and reveals a deep-seated disrespect for women in general. His baseless claim that Mayor Richard Irving put Alderwoman Patty Smith up to challenging him is not just an insult to her integrity, it's a direct and calculated attack on anyone who dares to stand in the way of his self-serving agenda. His attacks are not limited to those who oppose him, but also extend to anyone who supports our incumbent mayor or refuses to bend to his divisive and absurd misguided beliefs. Mr. Lash's cowardly actions go even further. He and his affiliates, including Hector Ochoa, Sandy Smith, and among others, have weaponized social media for their vile agenda. Hiding behind fake profiles and anonymous accounts, they spread malicious lies, bully innocent residents, intimidate city officials, and harass business owners. Their cruelty is limitless, even going so far as to falsely accuse a respected city employee of horrific crimes, including rape and pedophilia. These actions are not just only morally unreprehensible, they are criminal. I have called upon the Federal Bureau of Investigation to urgently investigate this matter and ensure that those who are responsible are held fully accountable. This calculated misuse of social media and targeted harassment is an outright assault on the safety, dignity, and well-being of our community. It is extremely clear that John Lash thrives on turmoil and division. His reckless actions and abusive power serve only to advance his own corrupt agenda. By manipulating situations to suit his interests, he drags Aurora into a web of lies, deceit, and discord. His misuse of power to destroy rather than build us is eroding the foundation of our community. This isn't leadership. Mr. Lash, you are a cancer who's eating away at our city. Furthermore, you have done nothing to uplift Aurora. Instead, you have mobilized your affiliates to spread destruction and wreck havoc across our city. Your actions are a disgrace, and your continued presence in our office poses a serious threat to our community's safety and prosperity. The most responsible course of action that you can take is to step down. You are unfit, reckless, and you are a danger to us all. I urge City Council to take bold and immediate action. This toxic behavior has no place in Aurora. We need leaders who are committed to advancing the progress our city has achieved, not one who seeks to drag us backward. This is our city, and we will not let this sick man's agenda jeopardize our future. Thank you.
Well, Madam Clerk, do you have any additional speakers?
We do.
Call the next speaker.
Adam Pauly.
Mr. Pauly, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Thank you. The care of people's lives and their happiness must be the first and only legitimate objective of good governance, and here in Aurora, we practice good governance. These words from Thomas Jefferson and our mayor, unfortunately, I do not believe are ringing true. I am here once again to ask for the harm reduction to be done here in our city. I met with our deputy mayor on December 12th, and I've spoken with members of council on this, too. Oh, it may have just been caught in the papers, it must have been just shuffled in the papers. What that highly implies is that this is not a priority. Every five minutes in this country, somebody passes away. We have the ability to change that, to turn the course, to heal our communities, and unfortunately, that action has not been taken. It is too late for my family to be whole, but it is not too late for others. There will always be a bloody gash on my soul and a black mark on there, but it is not too late for you. We need to do this. Our asks have been clear. Michelle Myers and her team are backed by the full faith and credit of Kane County. This is something that could have been done months ago. It does not cost our city a dime, and even if it did, we have received opioid money. The time is now to take the actions to save the lives, to make our communities whole again. The time is now, and history will remember our actions or lack thereof. It's too late for my family, but it's not too late for yours. I ask for action now. I yield the floor. Thank you.
Any additional speakers, Madam Clerk?
There are none, Mr. Smith.
All right. Before we go on to the next portion of the agenda, I believe, and although I respond to speakers when they're speaking, Mr. Pauly, I will say that we have given the green light for that, and we appreciate you coming and expressing the need and urgency in making sure we protect people's lives. So, unfortunately, Deputy Mayor, who you've spoken to, was on vacation all last week, and will be back till the end of this week, but as soon as he does, we'll make sure that, based on what he and I and my team talked about, in making sure this happened at the commuter center in downtown, that it will go forward as we spoke about. But thank you very much for your words and your passion on that. The next portion of the agenda is our committee reports. Chairwoman Patty Smith, can you give the Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee report, please?
Sure, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee met on January 15th, 2025, and reviewed the following items. Twenty-four dash zero nine eight-two, an ordinance amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Aurora, by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to rezone vacant property located at 628 South Lake Street from our four-two-family dwelling district to our three-one-family dwelling district. Consent?
No objections, I'm going to.
Item number twenty-five zero zero zero-four, an ordinance establishing a conditional use, planned development, and approving the Galena Hotel Plan Description for the property located at 116 West Galena Boulevard.
Consent.
Hold on one second. Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this topic, I read the downtown Aurora parking memo that was provided. It's not clear from that memo what the parking situation for this building would be. I don't know if maybe somebody has a minute to elaborate on that a little bit. I guess the question more specifically is if somebody moves into this apartment, where do they park? Do they park in public spaces and they have a 48-hour?
Hold on a second, just let her answer the question. Go ahead.
Yes, so they are.
State your name.
Jill, I'm sorry, Jill Morgan, senior planner of zoning planning. So, they are planning on.
And feel free to adjust your microphone so it's a little bit closer to you.
Thank you. They are planning on utilizing city lots. There are ways to have overnight parking, so it won't be just limited to those 48 hours, but they are planning on working with the city and using the adjacent city lots, and eventually, obviously, like when the casino moves out, there will be additional parking available there as well.
And then what? Did anything materialize with Old Second? I think that was sort of the plan when this first came through council.
That, they had, they were looking into that, but currently, there is nothing worked out with the Old Second.
And presumably, then, I guess residents will know that they're getting into this.
Yes, they'll be told about the parking situations, and I think, I mean, we have other parking apartment buildings that, when they get leases, they tell them the availability of the surrounding parking and how you get long-term overnight parking.
I think the concern that I have is that, you know, that's a number of units, and what happened, of course, at, was it Two North Broadway, is a lot of those people then were taking up parking spaces that businesses would rather have their customers in. So, I don't know, I think somehow we need to designate a parking lot for this.
And although I appreciate your, what seemingly be sincere concern about parking in downtown. We do actually, we are, have a parking plan and continually work on updating that parking plan. I don't know if Jill is a person to actually speak on that parking plan. Is there anyone from Ken's apartment that can talk about what our plan is downtown for parking, and what it has been, and what we continually work on as far as parking?
Ken Schroth, Public Works Director and City Engineer. It's been a team effort with economic development, planning, zoning, engineering, and also APD, but we analyze the existing data, and I know Trevor Dick has been working on a parking study that we'll be coming forward with as well, so it's been, and the subcommittee basically meets monthly to go over issues throughout the downtown to address them as they come up as this larger plan develops.
And as we continue to have more residential downtown as well, which is why we focused on this parking plan and been working on it for a number of years, because we don't expect that this is going to be the last set of apartments that we have in our downtown, so we're constantly working on making sure that we have our downtown living space available for those that want to live down here and be able to park their vehicles. But thank you for your concern, Alderman Lash. You have any more questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
The plan for this to be done, by the time this complex is finished, I believe we may have the casino gone and the start of another project which could give us more.
Yes, again, that's all part of the overall parking plan, all the different garages and opportunities that we'll have for all of our individuals living downtown, and so the administration is just as concerned as any alderman that might feign concern here on the dais today. But thank you very much, Jill. Do you have any more questions, anybody? No? We're going to put this one on unfinished, because I believe one of our aldermen here may have a conflict, Alderman Warman. So, we'll put this matter on unfinished business, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you very much, brother, we're all good.
Okay, moving forward, twenty-five zero zero two-two, an ordinance changing the name of a portion of Suncrest Drive to Suncrest Court, located north of Wigpoint Drive, located in Kane County, Aurora, Illinois.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Twenty-five dash zero zero two-four, an ordinance changing the name of Elm Street to West Park Ave, located between North Lake Street and North River Street, located in Kane County, Aurora, Illinois.
Consent.
Mr. Mayor, that is all that we have for the Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee.
No objections, I'm going to consent as well. Thank you very much. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. I'm sorry, the next report, committee report. Chairman Franco, can you give the Finance Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Committee, Finance Committee, met on January 16th, 2025, reviewed the following items, two-five dash zero zero two-three, an ordinance amending various sections of Division 2V2 of Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to purchases. This will allow for the bidding process to be electronic, as publishing a newspaper is somewhat archaic, and will only be used when required savings, when required, and the savings for the city will be approximately $30,000 a year.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Two-five dash zero zero two-nine, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of $39,981 from the Department of Homeland Security for the fiscal year 2023 Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program to update existing building codes and handbooks to reduce potential losses to buildings and contents due to floods, tornado winds, and other natural disasters. The city is required to match the funds from non-federal sources, which will amount to $13,327, and the overall effect is a 75-25 split in funding.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to.
And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you very much. Chairman Seville, can you give the Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The PHS and T Committee met on January 14th, 2025, and reviewed the following two items. Twenty-four dash zero nine nine-nine, authorization, a resolution authorizing the emergency management coordinator to execute an intergovernmental emergency warning siren donation. Agreement with the Village of Sugar Grove pertaining to real property located at Route 56 and Blackberry Creek in Sugar Grove, Illinois. We're essentially transferring now one warning siren to Sugar Grove. They have the better technology now where they can take it over and don't have to rely on the city.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to.
Consent. And the second one is twenty-five dash zero zero three-two, a resolution authorizing the chief of police to sign and execute the annual memorandum of understanding with Learning for Life, a District of Columbia not-for-profit corporation for the Aurora Police Department Youth Explorers Post Number 8847.
Consent.
This is to help young people ages 14 to 20 develop skills. There are currently now 21 people enrolled. They're looking to possibly pursue a career in law enforcement. They meet bi-monthly, and they, at the end of the session, they complete community service hours. They meet the APD, they have eight weeks in the first semester and nine weeks in the second semester.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Consent, and that's the report from PHS and T, Mayor.
Thank you very much, kind sir. Let's go on to the next committee. Chairwoman Garza, can you give the Infrastructure and Technology Committee report, please?
Yes, Mayor. We met on January 13th. The first item is twenty-four dash zero eight five-nine, a resolution requesting implementation to the privacy readiness review by Kles LLC, Atlanta, Georgia, for a total amount not to exceed $100,000.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Twenty-four dash zero nine eight-seven, a resolution to a water contractor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
On that last item, Alderman Bug, before we put that on consent, Alderman Bug has a question.
That was zero eight five nine, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I do have a question on that.
What's your question, brother?
In the legislation text, it talks about the way this was selected, and then it says it was from eight vendors, it went down to two. The committee did scoring and selected this vendor. Normally, the scoring and the criteria is an attachment for us to review. That did not happen this time.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Jeff Anderson, Deputy CIO, Mayor, members of the council, Alderman Bug. Good question. I don't have it in front of me. I believe the Marketplace final briefing is included as an attachment, and in that Marketplace final briefing should be the scoring towards the end there. There should be one page in there with just the two finalists and their scores listed.
Okay, I see it's embedded inside the.
Yes.
Do you have any questions on the scoring itself, Alderman Bug?
No, that's good. They were close.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? None, all right, we'll go ahead and leave this on consent. All right, let's go to the next item.
Twenty-four zero nine eight-seven, a resolution to a water contractor Connolly Electric Company in a amount not to exceed $53,500 for the water production division.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Twenty-four dash one thousand, a resolution authorizing the purchase of replacement and additional vehicles for the City of Aurora fleet in a amount not to exceed $1,570,000.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Twenty-four dash ten zero three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an EHEC water maintenance agreement agreement with Edison Company as part of the miller's right to La Jolla Court water main installation.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Twenty-four dash one zero zero seven, a resolution authorizing the execution of permits with state of Illinois for maintenance and construction on the state highways.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Twenty-five dash zero 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 five, a resolution authorizing rehabilitation project to six furnishes, water distribution pumps for the water production division in a amount not to exceed $402,000.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Twenty-five dash zero 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 nine, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to adapt unit price submitted by Core and Main for the purchase of census water matters and accessories.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Twenty-five dash zero zero one zero, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to execute French Order Number One to the contract with Hoer Construction, Inc., for the 2024 Sanitary Source CIPP lining project in the amount of $84,825.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Twenty-five dash zero zero one one, a resolution authorizing a contract, an IEPA PWSLP loan forgiveness agreement with Brand Escavating, Inc., for the lead service replacement project, Contract Two, for the bid amount of $3,261,280, pending approval of an IEPA loan forgiveness loan.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Twenty-five dash zero zero one six, a resolution authorizing the execution of real estate contract to purchase properties required for the France Ward Built and St. Louis Winding Project.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
We conclude the meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Alderman Bug, I apologize.
Can we just get a brief?
On zero zero one six?
Yeah, definitely.
Ken Schroth, Public Works Director. So, what's before you is a contract to start, well, as you know, we approached the council previously about getting permission to go and negotiate using federal procedures to purchase a right-of-way adjacent to Farnsworth from I-88 to Butterfield and Bilter from Church to the county line, basically, and so we proceeded with those negotiations with an outside firm. That outside firm has roughly five or six out of the 15 parcels ready to purchase, and that's what we're coming forward with right now, and we expect to come forward with the others in the coming months. In the meantime, council has awarded the 15 or 16 million dollar construction project to begin that project this year. Any other questions?
Alderman Seville?
Yes, do we anticipate?
I'm sorry, did you have any more questions, Alderman Bug, before we move on?
No, no.
Alderman Seville, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. Do we anticipate completing that project, the purchase for the rest of the properties all this year?
Well, we've truncated the project to, even though it's to the limits, we awarded it to the limits I just described. The actual goal of the project is to construct everything ahead of the Black Friday events, mid-November is our goal, and that is to build everything to the north side of the Thorntons and to the east side of the Thorntons, and so that's what we're trying to get done this year, and depending upon budget availability, we would do the rest of the following year.
Any other questions?
Unfinished.
Alderman, unfinished? All right, next item.
We conclude the meeting, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go on to the final committee report. Chairman Warman, can you give the Rules, Administration, and Procedure Committee report, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rules, Administration, and Procedures Committee met on January 7th, 2025, and reviewed the following items. Twenty-four dash zero nine seven-seven, a resolution approving the appointment of Glenda Love and the reappointments of Samara Galvez and Maureen McCain and Penelope Garcia and Luanne Lamonte to the Human Relations Commission.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Next item on the agenda, twenty-four dash one zero one-three, a resolution to endorse the Legislative Action Program of the DePage Mayor's and Managers Conference for the 2025 Legislative Session.
Consent.
I'll put that on unfinished.
Unfinished.
Thank you.
And then that concludes this agenda, but I do have an item from this afternoon's RAP committee that I wanted to share with everybody and just kind of summarize everything. It was item number twenty-five dash zero zero six-eight. This is in relation to the automatic initiative funds. I think what you'll see in today's RAP agenda, that we're almost there, there was a couple changes that we made from that original document, was on page four, we're going to add some language to include shredded material, and then on page five, we're going to add it to include print funds, too, so if you.
Just so we're all clear and on the same page, what exactly are we, what issues are we addressing? What's the problem?
It wasn't necessarily a problem, I think we were just putting everything into, quotify everything that we have as far as use of automatic funds, so this is changing the percentage from 50,000 to 50,000, 25,000, it's going to be 37,500 for each, and then it clarifies what could be used as, currently is non-capital, obviously for sidewalks and what have you, but we also wanted to include work cleanups, mailers, and things like that, too, to go, come from the capital side of the fund as well, too. So, we've been talking about this probably for a good month, I would say.
Three years.
Yeah, so.
Thirty-six months.
I got the scars to prove it. Yeah, exactly, so we had, like I said, what we had discussed today, I think, is a product that we want to move forward with, so our goal was to bring everyone up to speed on what we talked about today, and then bring this to City Council next week as new business.
Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, what, are you going to, is there a draft memo that's going to go out to the rest of the council on that?
I would talk with Attorney Beasley.
It's in the rap, it's in the rap right now, in your pad, in the rap.
The text of the proposed amendment, with the exception of the changes that Chairman Warman just mentioned, are in the agenda packet for today's RAP. There was not an agenda, there was not the traditional memo associated with that item because, to allow for a little bit more in the way of conversations at RAP, but by the time it gets to City Council, it'll be fully developed into the normal ordinance format and memo that will delineate the changes that are being made.
So, the next step is for it to come as new business?
At City Council next week.
At the full council.
Because there wasn't the opportunity to get it on this agenda, not knowing what RAP was going to do today.
Okay, well, maybe if there's a way to get a copy out a little bit earlier than the 48, with the changes that were made today.
The language, the language as it appeared right now is available. The only changes are that the funds will be allowed for the use, in addition to what's in there right now, will also be allowed for shred events, specifically as opposed to recycling and work cleanup events, and then the full cost of the newsletters would be covered as opposed to just postage.
Thank you, no further questions, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? All right, there we go, thank you very much, as that concludes.
Yeah, concludes Rules, Administration, and Procedures Committee.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to new business. Madam Clerk, there are a couple items in our new business. Will you read the first item, please?
Twenty-five zero zero five-three, a resolution approving the appointment of Steve Calenza as Superintendent of Parks and Recreation.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent. Is Mr. Calenza here today? Brother, we want to step on up and say hi to us. Come on up, introduce him, introduce him, Jen. Brother, we want to step on up and say hi to us. Come on up, introduce him, introduce him, Jim. What's that? Jim, oh yeah, I'd go, Jim, yeah. Jim, introduce your people, man.
Hello, everybody.
How you doing?
Jim Archer, Chief Public Services Officer. I'd like to introduce our best parks guy that we're going to have, City of Aurora.
Tell you a little bit about yourself, brother.
All right. I've been working in this field for about 15 years, very passionate about outdoor activities. When it comes to, you know, anything outside, I like to spend time with my family while I'm at work. I like to get everybody on board with that and, you know, get everybody enjoying their job, because I'm the type of person that, I came to a job that this is now a hobby of mine, and I'm lucky enough to get paid to do it. And I want to spread that around to everybody else and try to get them to have that same mindset. Just truly enjoy what you do, because like everyone says, when you're actually enjoying what you're doing, it's not really work. So I'm looking forward to, you know, being part of this team and doing some great things here, continuing to do some great things here.
Thank you, brother. Appreciate that, man. We look forward to having you a part of the team. Anybody have any questions?
I do so. And how do you pronounce your name? I think we all, everybody that said it got it wrong, so.
Yeah, I'm used to that. It's Kalezza.
Kalezza.
Thank you.
Thank you, brother. All right.
Thank you.
No further questions. We'll, no objection, we'll put this on consent. Next, next, next item on our new business, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-five zero zero five eight, a motion authorizing and directing the Chief Human Resources Officer to execute a settlement agreement on behalf of the city in workers' compensation claim number 18Q051559314.
Consent.
No objections. I'm going to consent. That concludes new business. We are going to the next section of the agenda, Alderman's Corner. If I'm not mistaken, Alderman Ward, one Alderman, Dan Barrero, is this your first ever Alderman's Corner?
Yeah, it snuck up on me.
Well, well, let me sit back and take it in, brother. Go ahead. It's on you.
Luckily, I had, was able to observe a few of them before me, and I thought, well, I have plenty of time. And then here we are, January's here. And so that's the first month, so it's the first ward. So here we go. So I put this together just to kind of give some highlights of what, you know, what was, what I've been doing in the ward and what's been happening. And, you know, the time kind of went by real fast. So this, this is going to be abbreviated, because I don't, I started in August, so I don't have anything before August. And then technically, my appointment is, you know, eight months, so it's not going to be anything beyond, you know, May. So it's going to be a short, a short one. But I just wanted to say that the inauguration was a great event. I was not expecting the turnout and support at the event. And I think I spent most of the time taking pictures and, you know, getting hugs from people. So for all of you that were there, you know, thank you so much. It meant a lot. I think we had all of the council there as well. And then, you know, it didn't take very long, and then things were coming quickly with events. So I attend the Northeast Community Neighborhood Group regularly. I've been attending that since like 1993. You know, pretty steady. And so right across the street is, from the Marywood Community Center, is the walk, is Church Road Park, and they have a Walk with a Doc event. So they talk about it at the neighborhood group meetings. So I happened to go out there and walk with the group that was there. And they, they walk around the path and they, they're able to learn about health tips. And so I actually got a, I benefited from attending that one. So I'm going to try to help promote that and get more people to engage with that and see if we can get it in Garfield Park as well. The Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association had a celebration for the 30 years at Garfield Park. That was a great event. Got to see some, some familiar faces. I saw the former chief and mayor Stover that was in attendance there. Mayor Irvin was there and, or Chief Cross was there. And I was, I was, people were envious because I won one of the prizes. So you can see that picture down there. Also, I was asked to participate in the Mexican flag raising, and so that was an honor to participate in that. It was a very well-attended event and very, 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 I survived and was not caught dancing. People were taking pictures of folks dancing. I tried to, I tried to escape that. I think maybe next time I probably won't. Also, we had a special street dedication for Mike Hitman Wilson. Mike is a classmate of mine, graduated East High same year. And so it was a, it was a special occasion, because I'm familiar with, with the neighborhood over there and the flower streets, they call them. And so there was quite a few classmates there that participated in the commemoration of that street dedication. And here's another picture with some of my classmates. And we had two ribbon cuttings on the same day. One was the Paradise Tattoo Parlour ribbon cutting. Brandon and his crew were there. And you can see at the end there a picture of Dee Basili. Thought I would include that picture there. And then she's also in this next one, at the Banana Split ribbon cutting. Daniel Cuevas, the new owner. So that was a great to, to see that business to keep going for another 40 years. Hollywood Casino, City had an event to, to give an update on the casino, and I included some pictures there. It's going up pretty fast and you can really see it from, from many different angles or streets and when you're in the area. And also was able to participate in the groundbreaking for East Bank Development. And that, that development is going to be a huge catalyst for, for the area. And also another groundbreaking is Fire Station 13. And so this is a brand-new station. It's going to be on the northeast side off at Nann and Bilter. And this is going to help to improve public safety and improve response times for the emergency calls. So this is a great addition to the City of Aurora's service to the community. And Leonard's Avenue celebrated their 73rd annual, and I was able to attend, dropped in when they were putting it, putting it up and also when they had a blessing of the nativity scene. So it's a special activity that takes place in the ward. And so for, for the, in regards to planned activities for this year, I'm working on a newsletter. So I'm wearing that hat right now. I'm going to be planning a special events, a special census event for February to get, get community engagement in the ward, at least the part that's going to be counted. And then also the establishing or holding a ward committee. And also I'm working on a ward, the ward committee, but also a ward meeting as well. So I like to have these events so I can get input from residents as to what they would like to see in the ward and also looking into a shred event. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Joe, great job for your first, first one out, brother. Clearly, we got a lot of stuff going on in Ward One. What'd you say, Franco?
I said, hopefully it's not the last.
All right. Well, all right, well, that concludes the Alderman's Corner. Great job again, Mr. Barrero. And we look forward to your next one. Anyway, there is no need for a closed session. There's been a motion adjourned by Alderman Franco, second about Alderman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.